Yep, we can hear you. Can you hear us now?
I should have tested this earlier.
Are you able to hear us, Chris? Hold on one second.
Hello Chad, can you hear me?
Hey Chris.
Call the workshop to order of the Battle Creek City Commission. I have received two notifications of commissioners that will either be late or not here at all. Commissioner Reynolds has some work responsibilities. And then I just received a text from Commissioner Smith and she will be just a few minutes late. Without further ado, I'd like to ask for a roll call.
Commissioner Katarski Smith, Commissioner Lacoste, Commissioner Lance, Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Mayor Banky.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Reynolds, Commissioner Simmons, and Vice Mayor Sophia.
Here.
Let's mark Commissioner Simmons as being here.
Yep.
Should I go back to welcome introductions, Amanda?
Sure.
Okay, thanks. We'll start, we'll start over with Ted Dearing and we'll move around this way.
Yeah, Ted Dearing, Assistant City Manager.
Vicki Howser, City. Oh, I'm sorry. Janation Morris, Word Two, City Commissioner.
Mark Banky, City Commissioner.
Sherry Sophia, City Commissioner.
Amanda Zimmerman, City Manager.
Marcel Stetzel, Deputy City Attorney.
Welcome Marcel. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda is public comment and this is a period of time that we allow people to make comments about our discussion points today. So if you'd like to make a public comment this time, please raise your hand and come forward. If not, we understand. Any, is there any other public comment? Hearing none, I'm going to turn it over to our City Manager Amanda and she'll introduce our individual making the presentation.
Thank you Mayor. So for this evening, we have the Sustainable Battle Creek Committee update and the greenhouse gas inventory results. Patty Hawk Melish, oh, sorry, I'll get it, I promise, is here to present their findings and to gauge how this commission would like to move forward with the information. Patty?
I'm Patty Hawk Melish. I know many of you, don't know all of you yet, but I am here to talk about our Sustainable BC Committee and our status right now. I also brought with me some of our Sustainable BC members and I, can I introduce them or let them introduce themselves?
Oh, that's fine.
Go ahead, Andy?
Hi, I'm Andy Humboldt, former City Commissioner and Chair of the Sustainable BC Committee.
Good evening. Chris Martin, Urban Planner at Battle Creek Unlimited and on the committee.
Hello, I'm Bob Gilbert. I'm a volunteer for the committee and I've been on six years.
Well, thank you. I think, thank you for coming tonight and your support.
Thank you for your service, all three of you.
So, so I am the Environmental and Storm Service Manager for the City of Battle Creek. So we're here tonight to kind of give you an update on the Sustainability Plan, its current status, the committee, what we do, and also we had a recent greenhouse gas inventory for the Battle Creek community. So we want to give you that information and get some guidance from the commission going forward. Vicki, could I get a?
Sure.
Thank you. So the city has a sustainability plan that was drafted in 2019 and that is for specifically city operations, so city facilities, city operations. And that's the plan that we're currently operating off of. And within the plan, we specify that this will be in need of an update every five years or so. And we are now at twenty, twenty-five, six years, so we're looking for some updates to the plan. To bring you up to speed on what the Sustainable BC Committee does, we meet six times a year, every other month. It's the last Monday of the month and it's typically a Zoom meeting, but we're going to start going into maybe some more in-person meetings. The committee consists of volunteers from local businesses, policymakers, city staff, and engaged citizens in the community. What we do when we meet, we basically have a speaker. It's sometimes internal city staff giving a progress update on some, some facet of the, the city. Or we have sometimes outside speakers come in and talk about their sustainability initiatives. The next slide. So our committee consists of Andy Humboldt, Chair. He's been the Chair for how many years? As long as I've been here, so a while. Christopher Basic, Roger Bossy is our newest member, Dee Chauvin, Bob Gilbert, who's here with us, Michael Hall, Chris Martin, also here, Mark Stevens and Mike Wazinski, who, Mike was down, he, we had a miscommunication on time, so he was hoping to be here tonight. But then we also have commission members, Mayor Mark Banky, Commissioner Paige Katarski-Smith, and Commissioner Jessica Lacrosse are designated for the committee. And then also City Liaisons, myself, and then Bessie Plug, who is the Environmental Program Coordinator. Excellent. So the Sustainability Plan has a number of themes, chapters, themes, energy, water, transportation, waste, government management practices, land use, and public outreach and education. And each of these themes has goals and each goal has milestones that, helping us reach those goals. So the short term was 2022 milestones, midterm is this year, and we have long-term milestones as well. And I just pulled out the solid waste goals to give you an idea of what, what the kind of goals we're looking for. And the solid waste goals were, were short and easy to, easy to read to you. So just as an example, the solid waste goals are decreasing the raw materials used by the City of Battle Creek, reduce waste and increase recycling citywide, encourage recycling of construction and demolition debris, and then provide recycling receptacles at public spaces and events. So I'm just going to walk through each of the themes, just really high overview of all of them and give you an idea of what the goals are and some of our progress towards meeting those goals. So the water goal basically focuses on stormwater management and wellhead protection programs. The City of Battle Creek is required to have a stormwater permit that's required through the State of Michigan and the Environmental Protection Agency. And that has, that permit has a lot of requirements as far as water quality monitoring, maintenance issues, and then outreach and education. So a lot of our goals for the Sustainability Plan are being met through that permit. We also have an active wellhead protection program. We have a wellhead protection team that meets quarterly. We have a wellhead protection plan and then a lot of outreach and education programs associated with both of those programs. Transportation, again, this was written, the Sustainability Plan was written in 2019. So with the Ride Calhoun program being launched in 2026, our, our goals and programs will, will drastically change from what was outlined in 2019. But we will still have our citywide fleet. So purchases and grants for hybrid and electric vehicles will still be a priority as well as trying to reduce fuel usage and emissions from our fleet. Next slide. Waste, I did touch on that a little bit already, but basically the goals are to reduce the waste generated by the city and our residents, improve recycling access at our city facilities. And we did make great strides in that just a year or so ago. We were able to move many of the city facilities to a single-stream recycling dumpster. If, if city facilities had recycling in the past, many were just corrugated cardboard. So we were able to get dumpsters that allow many of our facilities to recycle the same materials that are recycled in our curbside recycling program. We're looking at food waste composting, a program potentially down the road here, and then education and outreach regarding waste, solid waste reduction and recycling. One of our themes is also government management practices that will focus mostly on purchasing policies and, you know, preferred vendors and products potentially, and then facility management practices. And that will, I think, become an easier goal for us now that we have a facilities manager on staff, a role for that. So we can now maybe streamline more of our sustainability efforts across facilities as well. And then another part of that goal will be culture, increasing the culture of sustainability among our city staff. There's a land use theme and that has a, would heavily focused on what the planning department efforts are, their zoning and their codes and ordinances. Part of that will be reducing carbon emissions from our public properties and the city as a whole, and then increasing brownfields site development efforts as well. And then the master plan, if we can incorporate some of those three bullet points into the greater master plan, that will, that's part of our goal. And then a big part of our goal was Kalamazoo River Channel Restoration and Chris Martin on our, on our committee is spearheading that effort with Battle Creek Unlimited and we're making, starting to make strides in that and it's been really fun to see, so. Also with our land use, one of the goals is increasing tree canopy and forestry management. And just over the last year and a half, we have, we've done some targeted harvesting in the Jackson Street Forest. We have a forester on, on our contracted and, and we also received a grant from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation over the last year and a half to plant a lot of trees. And just this last week, we put in our 3,600th tree out on Jackson Street. So we're working towards that tree canopy, so. And then another, one of the last goals is outreach and education. And our goal was to utilize various mediums to reach the public and we're using traditional, like the shopper news, we're doing direct mailers, utility bill, stuffers, we're also using social media. We've used radio in the past, billboards. So we're trying every medium we can think of to reach the public, to spread our message. And then the other, one of the other goals is having the city serve as a resource for sustainability planning, community-wide. And we also host a number of events, recycling events, electronics, scrap tire, styrofoam. And then we have, Bessie put together the Crazy for the Kazoo event a couple of weeks ago, which is in its 24th year. And that's a stewardship event with the community. We had about 100 volunteers planting trees, picking up trash, and we do a large Earth Day and Arbor Day events. And then another part of that goal for the outreach and education is to create not only a citywide sustainability plan, but a community-wide sustainability plan. So I'm going to bounce back to the energy goal and that will tie into our greenhouse gas inventory. So our, our committee realized that some of our goals, our milestones were based on reduction of carbon emissions over time. And we realized that we didn't have a baseline number two to reference. And so we had a baseline greenhouse gas inventory completed last year. And I'll get into that a little bit more, but a couple of our other energy goals that I'll highlight are lighting upgrades. And we've been making great strides in converting our lighting to energy-efficient LED lighting as far as streetlights and parking lot lights. And then we have the city, many of our facilities enrolled in energy efficiency programs through our energy providers, so. Next slide. So the greenhouse gas inventory, as I said, we needed a baseline from which to track progress towards our goals. So our baseline year for the Battle Creek community is 2022. We started this process in 2023, so 2022 was our most recent data that we had a complete data set for. I want to acknowledge that we received $5,000 from the Battle Creek Community Foundation to complete this baseline inventory. So thank you to them. And we decided to opt for a community-wide inventory rather than just city facility inventory because we recognize that city facilities, while we have more control over operations, it's just a very small part of our community emissions. So we felt that this was a community initiative effort, so we opted for the community-wide inventory. We contracted with a group called ICLI to complete the inventory. ICLI, it uses a standard protocol, so having them do our inventory will allow us to, in future years, have follow-up inventories to see how we're tracking on progress, so it's reproducible. And then a number of other Michigan municipalities have used ICLI as well. So it's also allows us to compare our inventory to other municipalities' inventories as well. And they provided a lot of guidance through the process. I want to thank Bob Gilbert. He was very helpful on this process as well, has some background in that. So the number we, we have for our 2022 emissions, community-wide, was 1,453,131 metric tons of carbon dioxide. Based on the data that was supplied to ICLI, commercial energy is about 45% of those emissions. Residential comes out at 21%, transportation 15%, industrial energy about 12%, our solid waste about 6%. Fugitive emissions were about 1%. And what that is, is basically unintentional releases of gases through the processes. And then our water and wastewater operations here in the City of Battle Creek were a very small fraction at .01%. We used a number of data sources to come to that value. Consumers Energy data, SEMCO, Battle Creek Department of Public Works data, Battle Creek Transit data. They provided mileage and fuel usage. Battle Creek Executive Airport provided similar information, fuel use, miles, flights coming in and out. And then Calhoun County Solid Waste Management Program, they provided information from the CNC landfill north of Marshall. So those, those bullet points are specific Battle Creek data, that's real, real numbers there. The three on the bottom are widely-used tools to estimate some of the, the missions that we don't have specific data for. So those are, those are just some widely-used tools that ICLI used. We're going to bounce back to the Sustainability Plan, the previous energy goals outlined in that. So again, our short term, 2022, midterm, 2025, long-term, 2030. So our, one of our goals for 2022 is to have a greenhouse gas emissions inventory completed, so we've got a checkmark there. And if you look at the reduction goals for 2025, it's a 5% reduction. And 2030 was a 10% reduction, and those are for emissions of our buildings. And if you, those, those numbers are not super aggressive, even. So if you look at those numbers based against the, the numbers in the green here, those are the Paris Agreement goals. And that's 2030 is a 50% reduction from baseline and 2050 is 100% reduction from baseline. So a little bit, you know, different in the, in the Paris Agreement goals are, are the goals that need to be met to keep the temperature below 1.5 degrees Celsius by 2050. So that was, that was a, many nations talking and that's the goal that was come up with in 2015. We looked at, our Sustainability BC Group proposed a 63% reduction in 2035 to stay on track with that. But since we had our inventory done so recently, we thought trying to reach the 2030 goal might be a little ambitious. So to stay on track, we, that's just a recommendation from our group that we would try and meet a 63% reduction from baseline by 2035. Next, please. So this graph is sort of confusing if, when you first look at it. But ICLI provided us a business-as-usual forecast. So you'll see on the far left is our 2022 baseline emissions. And if, so business-as-usual means, based on their predictions of how fuel efficiency standards are going to be mandated and changes to the energy grid, if we as a community keep basically plugging along, doing what we're doing, by 2030, we could see a 40% reduction in our emissions just by business-as-usual. And then if we forecast out to 2050, we'll, they're predicting we'll see a 37% reduction in our emissions by 2050, just again chugging along as we are. And that's again based on the government-based incentives. And that's again highly vulnerable to political change, as we know. So as of last year, that was the prediction. But that still leaves us at 2050, a 63% emissions chunk there that we still need to, to help, find a way to decrease. And that would need to come from private and public commitments to reducing those goals. So it's not just, it's not just going to happen based with government-based incentives with changes to the fuel efficiency and energy grid, but there, there is the expectation that we will see some reduction. So again, we, we are here tonight to get some recommendations on how to use this information in our update to the Sustainability Plan. Our group would like to see an adoption of emissions to net zero by 2050. That would align us with a number of other Michigan communities. I have a list of, of all the communities that have committed to that, not all the communities, a list of many communities. I'm sure there are more that I have not found yet, but, so it also, it aligns us with other Michigan communities and it serves to protect our community with better air quality, with less emissions, better water quality, lesser health impacts, temperature reduction, and reduced flooding impacts. So if we are to adopt that, we, the next step would be to determine a specific set of goals to achieve that net zero goal. So, so I guess we are, you can go to the next slide. But we're just looking for guidance going forward, now that we have the greenhouse gas inventory, how we want to, how we want to use that information going forward. And our next Sustainable BC meeting is Monday at 1:30 and you're all welcome to join us, so. So do you have any, any comments that you'd like to add to that with the committee? Yeah, sure.
So as Patty said, I was a community volunteer. I helped out with this, worked with the ICLI group. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I don't know if you've had a chance to read that report yet. It's a big report, might not be the most interesting thing you've ever read. But some of the things that we built into that report, I just wanted to make sure I could call your attention to. That report will address some of the problems with climate change, things you guys are probably all aware of. When we think of global warming, the various problems that could occur, I think on the last slide there Patty had. There's air quality problems, water quality problems, heat problems for the community. So we wanted to make sure that that report, ICLI did a very good job producing a typical climate change report. It talked in very broad terms about what climate change will do to communities all around the country. But we have, we're lucky here in Michigan because we have, our universities, big universities, do some very specific reporting and data collection about our local area. So we took the extra effort to make sure we built that into this report. So when you, if you do read the report, I think as, starting on page eight, you'll see risk things that are going to be real specific to the Great Lakes region and even more specific to southern Michigan. So we were able to gather data that was as narrow as the Great Lakes region and all the way down to southern Michigan. That starts out about on page eight. Also Patty talked a lot about the Sustainability Plan that we have. The recommendations that we made, that Patty outlined, they weren't just, you know, off the top of our head. They were to be consistent with what our plan that was written in 2019 called for. When the ICLI report was put out, the mayor produced a nice letter for that report. I urge you to read it. It was very well-written, Mayor.
I think Patty wrote it.
Well, I'll give credit to the person who has listed his author on it. But, but it was very well-written and I think it was very reasonable in, in what it was calling for. It was looking at community health and making a nice place for us all to be able to live. Typical things that the city, any city would want for their community. So our recommendations were built with that in mind, with your letter and also with the Sustainability Plan, the goals that have already been outlined in there and the goals that we may be updating as we go through this process. So I just wanted to make sure that that's apparent, that we tried to make this thing consistent, so that the city wasn't... We're asking for a net zero commitment, which would be a large commitment. I'm certain the city's never done that before, many communities haven't. But it's very consistent with what you're already doing, so it's, it's not as big of an ass as it might seem. And the final thing is, the committee members, I think I can speak for all of our committee members, were very sensitive to the idea that we would make a recommendation to the commission. And then, you know, for, a recommendation is not the same as achieving the goals. So we're very sensitive to the idea that if the city was to adopt these programs, it's not just making this commitment, it's, we've, at our committee meetings have discussed, how do you meet these goals? What can the city make, can make these goals? Can by 2050, 25 years from now? Could you literally be in a position where you're not using, or you're not having any carbon emissions? And we've discussed in principle, all the different ways you can do that. And I spent 25 years as a project manager and one of the things I always tried to do when I developed projects for my organization was, I wanted to make sure that if I'm going to propose a product, project, and it's an ambitious product, I like to kind of stack the deck and make sure I can win. And when we made this proposal and we talked about the ways the cities can succeed at this, there are ways you can win at this, kind of stacking the deck. So you're not, you're not counting on some future thing that you can't see to achieve these goals. The city has competencies right now that it does every day and you can utilize those competencies to achieve these goals. So I just wanted to make sure when you read through this report, very big, kind of standard boilerplate stuff. We put a lot of time and effort into this, thinking if you were to adopt this, the thing we all want is to make sure you succeed. And we're pretty clear on how we could do that. This isn't just a one-time commitment and we'll see you later. We would work tirelessly for the next 25 years with a path forward, say... for the next 25 years with a path forward, say over the next year if you adopted this. You will see a path forward in which you'll feel very confident that you're going to succeed. So I, I think if you think about making this commitment, think about making it from the standpoint that you're not going to make a commitment that you can't win. You're going to win in this, and we'll help you get there. So that was all.
Thank you, Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other, Chris or Andy, you want to say anything?
I don't have anything to add per se, but just to say that I'm here to, to answer questions. If you have historical questions, like Patty said, I've been on the committee since 2012, say for about six months in the middle when I wasn't, but I've, but I've been around, like Patty wasn't here when, when the plan was, was drawn up and implemented, but I was here going through, through that process. So, you know, I'm here to answer whatever questions you might have about how we got here, the intentions and, and all that, so, but thank you.
Chris, you're the urban planner, so.
Yeah, so just, just some reference, BCU's been around the community for over 50 years, but I'm their first urban planner, and I've been with them for about two and a half. So I like to collaborate with the city on a wide range of initiatives. The biggest, one of course is the river restoration project, but a plan like this makes our community more resilient, especially with flooding is a big one, right, and other, other areas of transportation and equity for all, and to keep the population, you know, livable for attracting new companies, existing companies, and retaining the, the residents in a sense of pride. So there's a wide range of other benefits to the community than just beyond the air quality and water quality that could be addressed. And so BCU is a committed partner to making the community resilient and, and welcome for all.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, with that being said, we'll now turn it over to the commission to see if there's any comments that you'd like to make or questions that you have of the committee. Are there any comments at this time or questions? Jessica?
I just wanted to say I did read the, read everything. You guys did a great job putting everything together. It's very thorough, so very impressive. Thank you.
One thing that we'll be doing here within a few months is sitting down with our new city manager and really better understanding some of the goals that will be different from when we had our previous city manager. And I guess if I were to make a promise to you is that we're going to do our best to get back to you just as soon as possible, if not by six months. And I, I say six months because it could be the time that we need to work with our city manager to put down our new goals, and her new goals for the city of Battle Creek too. We haven't even talked about that yet. It usually comes out of the city manager evaluation committee, so we're going to have some work to do. I want to say thank you for everything that you've done. This is good information, and I plan on reading it and getting back to you, and I'll encourage each of the commissioners to read it and to get back to you with any questions that they have or comments, so that we can be on the same page. And who knows, maybe within a six-month period of time, we're going to sit down again and have another workshop to firm up how we go forward. Is there anything else any commissioner would like to say? All right, we're going to adjourn this workshop, and we thank everyone for participating today. Thank you.